It's a meeting of the whole December 10th at 6:40. Adams, Jones, here, Sabardi, Jackson, Brownlee, Trujansky, Aggie, Alberts, here. Thank you. We have a revised budget for from our finance director and we have a couple of other things to go over this evening. But the time is the temporary budget for on January through March, which has to be passed soon. And we'd like this to, you know, we are our last meeting over the budget. Hoping that you, if you have questions, that you have sent them to Irene and she'll be able to ask them or answer them. So we put the senior center back in the budget, Irene?
Yes, I agree.
We put the senior center back.
That's the blue, some of it, some of it.
Okay. Yes, yes. I think we've seen the blue.
Yeah.
You know, we have to do.
Yeah, yeah.
It feels really weird. Table.
No tax, okay? There's something else being, let's get those basically, no tax.
No problem. I do want to tell you, the 2014-89, I'll be taking off the agenda, so just cross that out.
That's the 89, huh?
Yes, yes, I'll have to do that if needed.
Eighty-nine is coming off?
Yeah, we have a new, we looked at you, pink. We have a new proposition.
The pink that we just got went out?
Yeah.
Or that's what it's getting crossed off? No, eighty-nine is.
There was, there was just too many, too many questions, too many in the way in which it was being done, just too much controversy, so. We have information and we're hoping that this new piece of legislation will answer all the questions. Irene, you're on.
Okay, what should we like to discuss first? The revenue is that we want to discuss?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. We can start with the revenue page. That we identified as blue on the front, estimated resources. Okay, so we're talking about the change that were made from the last meeting, where they highlighted, blue, or highlighted it, so you can see it. Last week, I had since remuneration, we had submitted the senior grant for next year and these are the offices affecting those grants for the estimated resource to your agency. So as you can see, this revenue represents about eighty-two thousand dollars from the grants. And in terms of the revenue, that was the only change that was made from before. I left it yellow because those were discussions from the prior meeting, just to help us follow along with the revisions which we had discussed.
Just for clarification, so these numbers in blue are grant money only?
Yes.
Any other questions on that particular sheet?
Yes, Matt.
Go ahead.
You mentioned a special fund for the donations. Could you explain a little further how that's going to work, the special fund that's going to be created?
Well, it's already there, it's not, not a new fund, it's in the 700 series. And the donations are the program income that comes in, they have to go back into program. Technically, it should not be in that fund, but also the funds that were existing, so we would probably move them to where they're appropriate, which is to support those programs, so they should all support the general fund.
So there won't be a special fund for those donations?
Uh, no, not unless they're restricted. They're restricted funds, there's always special funds for restricted revenue. But those funds are to support the program, either they need them, but we get something that says restricted for some chairs, whatever, then that's a true restriction by the donor purpose. But if they're the collections that they make when they have transportation or meals or what have you, those are to support the program. So they're not restricted by the donor.
Will there be anything different done with the new donations that are being solicited for the senior center?
Of course, we'll keep a record of those, yeah, they're isolated, you'll see them on your financial statement as donations, fundraising, whatever, but they're designated.
In, within the general fund that we designated for long now?
Yes, because there's a support the general fund expenses.
Any other questions, please? As I said before, we are looking at a deadline here, so thinking ahead, we would definitely like to pass this at the meeting on the 17th, so now's a good time to ask the questions and be clear.
So that was the only change that I had made this time since the last meeting that I had heard. I was to add the senior grant lines, which total eighty-two dollars and one hundred seventy-nine dollars. Want me to expand a few?
I'm okay, but does everyone else say?
Okay, so correspondingly, the expenses I highlighted, this is a different color, a different color to that, but you'll see it starting in page two, the senior section. And, you know, the dollars that were added, so salaries and some basic expenses, I think the discussion, and we're going to literally address this, is that, you know, the internet to the budget, and of course, the far right hand corner is the one-fourth of the temporary budget. So I think the notion or the plan is to allow quarter for the other plans that they have to come to fruition, to see how they work out. So the general fund will have to support it for a quarter for January to March during the temporary budget period. And I think after that time, when it's kind of the primary budget, I mean, who knows what information we have, we'll go from there. But what this represents are the expenditures, of course, you do see the total annualized expenses in the third from the right column, says projected appropriation for 2015, in the purple and blue. And so those expenditures total three hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year compared to eighty-two thousand that we budgeted from the grants. And like I say, I did not include the donation because it's soft revenue, so when you're budgeting frequently, you don't like it's soft revenue, and most donations that come in, they may not come in, but the grants are like firm commitments, so. And the donations averaged about twenty-one thousand seven hundred dollars, but they're not in, no, that's what's projected, but they're not in here because, as I say, they're soft dollars. Which if we did include it, that would make, you know, a total of the three hundred thousand dollars.
Matt.
Go ahead.
The grants you said meant totaled to about eighty-two thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Those funds for the entire year?
Correct.
So will we get all of those funds if we only fund it for three months or six months into the year?
You know, that's really at the discretion of the agency that's funding it, because there are occasions when they decide they want to pick up a program, but those numbers are represented on your copy in the last column, there are a quarter of those expenses that's repaid the program as they end.
Right. I'm talking about the revenue.
That's what I'm talking about, if you look back at the first sheet I gave you, delivery, you'll see the quarter projected.
So this total amount there looks like, what, thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, about twenty thousand dollars, yeah?
Well, there's one quarter of the eighty-two, it's one-fourth of the eighty-two thousand.
Right, so it's about twenty thousand dollars?
About twenty.
Okay. The other sixty thousand is being funded just by taking out the surplus that we were going to have in the general fund?
No, it's part of the revenue that's expected for 2015. This is a 2015, like zero budgeting, this is not including any prior year surpluses, this is a strictly revenue that they expect to receive in 2015.
Right, right. So we had, we expect in the first three months, twenty thousand dollars, but we expect to spend eighty thousand dollars on senior services?
Correct.
Okay.
I think that's the projection, and that was the discussion we had, that this general fund had to subsidize.
Uh-huh. So the extra sixty thousand, we just, we have that extra money, that sixty thousand dollars, because that wasn't originally in the appropriations?
Now, if you remember, when we first started discussing, I said I had budgeted a surplus of about four, five hundred thousand dollars?
Yep.
So that we could start paying down on the existing deficits. So basically, the surplus is all gone, that was budgeted, so we're basically at zero.
How does that affect our standing with the State Auditor's Office?
I don't know, I mean, they haven't given us the rule about it. They've been here three days this week, you know, they're still giving information, that's all I can say. And I understand is that they're still unioning a lot more, so.
But basically, what union projected here will keep the center open through the end of our temporary budget?
It won't be as it is now, it's a lesser amount, it does reflect some reduction in expenses, it's not like the total. Because as you know, the first half of this year, Stephanie was here, okay, that position was moved to Gilby, and is not back in the budget, that's why the home delivery is blank, with zero expenses, because those expenses, she deducts her salary. So, and then there was some other reductions in terms of the staffing, and I'd say I prefer that the mayor speak to it, but for the most part, you know, it reflects one less cook in the kitchen, one less person at the food pantry, and one less driver, for the most part.
One less person at the food pantry would leave it absolutely empty, if there was only one person.
Well, the expectation that I let the mayor speak to was that the staff will have to reassign their time to programs for other missions, but we wanted to use some basic staffing. Okay, and then, you know, volunteers, as volunteers, we're hoping, because they can be part of the program, be volunteers.
There's food companies.
Is that the aid program? I mean, we got with the kitchen or whatever.
Justin, Mr. Jackson?
I know it's a bad word, but I'm gonna assume that, because we have home delivered meal grants, but we have nothing in the home delivered meal category, is that going to be strictly volunteer also?
We don't have that for home delivery, that's the food that's given to the seniors and deliver it or, you know, distributed, but there's no grant for that. Home delivered meals, nutrition, transportation, there's no home delivery.
How many can I line out in this, senior home delivered meals? So we say that's not home delivered meals?
No, I didn't say that, I said there's no grant for that, that was being funded by the city. And the meals are delivered, you know, free of charge, if I'm not mistaken, to the seniors. And, you know, they're delivered, whatever, but there's no grant for that. There's only one person formerly in that budget, Stephanie, who does the social worker.
And what it says, senior transportation, senior onsite meals, senior home delivered meals, all included?
Right.
And I thought that you said all of the food is all grants?
Okay, are you looking at the revenue section?
The revenue section, the third blue line.
The third blue line, it says senior home delivered meals, I'm sorry, yeah, that was the nine thousand dollars. I'm sorry, yeah, that was for the home delivery, I apologize. But I guess what I was saying, that there was no expenses charged to that, because the only expense that was charged in the past was Stephanie, the social worker, who's no volunteer, she wasn't good, but I'm sorry, I was.
That's okay, just my question was, because we have those meals, we get into the question, the only question is, can we assume that those are going to be delivered by volunteers?
I can't make that assumption because I'm not the program director, but I guess what I'm saying is that I think the drivers really part of the transportation, actually, and we already can get on that, but I think it's the drivers that deliver the meals.
Yes.
And there is a budget for transportation.
Okay, so somewhere, it's okay.
There are also volunteers who drive and participate.
But that was, I'm sorry, about, you know, expenses, there's no expense that was necessary to do it, so.
So stretch of the business.
Matt.
Go ahead.
Irene, right above the blue section is revenue charges. We still have it blanked out, basically, for recreation, so we're bringing back only human services and not the rest, so my question is probably to the mayor, how are we going to possibly maintain our parks?
Mayor, can you answer that question for us, did you hear?
How are we going to maintain our park?
Yeah, we have the rec department.
The under servants?
All litter and I don't.
So when you say maintain, what do you represent?
The camp here, over there, would you mind?
What?
The camp here, over, would you mind, please?
What do you mean by maintain?
My thought all along was that two, one and a half people, and I'd be wrong with this, that work under Linda and the rec department are the ones that go to the parks to either pick up litter and to, so if we have that department with no funding, then we're losing that maintenance, so to speak?
Well, we still have employees that are, yeah, that are going to pick up trash and cut their ass. I mean, as you know, the salt polling was taken over by an individual who, you know, took all those responsibilities, including cutting the grass, lighting the field and all that, so, yeah, we're going to have to look at some tough choices, all of us, come spring, about pavilion rentals and, you know, basketball courts, all that. I mean, you heard the amount of vandalism in the last meetings, so, you know, obviously we don't have money budgeted to replace, you know, doors and stacks and windows and things that we've already replaced about three or four, five times since I've been there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions here?
Yes, Matt.
Go ahead.
To follow on Mr. Jackson's question about the home delivered meals, you said the almost ten thousand dollars is not a, is not a monetary donation, it's actually money that's donated to the, to the pantry? Oh, I mean, not the pantry, to the, to the home delivered meals?
The home delivered meals, that's part of the revenue agency, correct, there's three components, the home delivered, the kind of the meals, and the transportation is a three components, from the grant from the air agency.
Okay, so that's a dollar amount, that's not, okay.
These are not soft dollars or budgeted contract dollars.
And where is that money spent in our appropriation, that ten thousand dollars?
It's spent to support the other meal program. Basically, like I say, what was being charged there before was this strictly Stephanie's salary, I mean, that's just history, you know, and now that she's gone all summer, there's been no expenses being charged here. So the activities from that program is being picked up by the other staff, I mean, it's like, I mean, they're not all, there's like one, two, three, for example, like part of Linda, but now part of Stephanie goes over there to help with that, so we can use that to support the amount that we're doing here, part of their salary. And these numbers, like I say, would be the entire salary for Linda, in order to prepare these budgets, we split them so that we could show and document a need for the dollars. So what Linda was once one hundred percent in the senior, she's now part of the senior, part of the home delivered, means this all.
Part of her salary split into her sections.
Right, but the budgeting purpose, because most of her salary anyway comes out of the general fund, that's part of the general fund, okay, she's not doing this, so it's like an administrative cost per second. I think it's important that you remember, this program is not an expense reimbursement program, it may make it a little difficult to understand, it's reimbursed per performance, per capital. So like, if they make a trip, there's so much they're paying for that trip, it has nothing to do with what the trip costs. So that's different from a lot of grant programs where it's an expense reimbursement, this is not an expense reimbursement, but we could show them that we made the trip, then whatever the unit costs for that trip, but it may cost the city more, I mean, with gas and all of the other things that we have to pay for to make that trip, that's not part of the reimbursement program. So they pay so much per trip, so much per meal, and so on and so forth, and it may or may not cover what actually happens. So it's not like a dollar for dollar type of program where it's best.
A lot of them do donate. A lot of them do donate.
Right, well, she sends the budget down, they project the usage, I mean, they project how many clients they would serve, so based on those clients' times on rate, that's what the budget is made of, you know, and that's what we're reimbursed. But it doesn't matter how much we pay for salary, or how much we pay for gas, whatever, they just give a certain amount to it, so that's why it's not as easy to follow like you would a reimbursement program.
Irene, on page one?
Mr. Jackson?
Expenditures. In fourteen was sixty-three thousand, projected for fifteen is seventy-eight. Tell me why the projection is?
Well, one thing with projections, I usually budget more for projections, and that's for revenue, so you don't have deficits. The auxiliary, which Captain Colton wants to speak, I mean, they have, I guess, a group, and it's not that for certain person all the time, it can be a group or mix of persons, so it sort of depends on how many it's used, and this is what we projected, just to make sure we have enough to cover, because I wasn't sure what would happen with the dispatch center or, you know, the river crossing, so I thought it would be better to have a little extra money for some of these other programs, in case we need something to cover, some other expenses that's, that's receivable. When the dispatch center, if we agree to do that, of course, there's a container, but if it moves to Beverly Heights, there still will be some needs at the city, so just trying to put a little push in there, have a little extra given needs.
Does the same hold true for jail administration in thirteen fifty?
Um, it could, like I say, with the jail and the auxiliary police, because I know, and I really, Captain Colton helped it is in terms of their responsibility, because I understand that, you know, there may be some overlap in some instances or some of the auxiliaries, I know there's some person that works both, isn't it, Captain?
That is correct, because we have a limited of resources in the auxiliaries and corrections.
And my thought is always better that it not be a, that it be, that it not be a.
So again, Irene, this is a, this is kind of a projection that may or may not be the exact amounts, the two hands here, so the best, to the best of your knowledge, this is.
It's okay, it's last, you know, there's any expenditures, I mean, you know, to avoid deficits, and you're like, they have a little budget, and not easy, and that's why with the income, there are concerns, they're like, they're blessed, and hopefully they're poor.
Matt.
Go ahead.
On page six, we have the total general fund expenditures?
Yes.
And they exceed the revenues for the general fund by thirty thousand dollars.
Correct. And then again, like I say, we still have to look at this work we're going to do, how many of the senior funds, you know, like I say, this is in here just for some idea, but like the senior program, when we actually go back to tweak it, then maybe a little less based on some of the expenses.
So we're projecting now to increase the deficit in 2015 in the general fund?
No, I'm not going to increase the deficit.
Yes, yes, we are, right here.
No, this calculation, like you say, is about thirty thousand dollars, okay, so somewhere, maybe that was one of the things that we had talked about earlier, is that in order to fund the senior, we're going to have to cut somewhere else, so we have to go through a year and try and thirty thousand more, cut the thirty thousand back out to senior, but that was one of the initial discussions that we had. And then also, you know, their cooking wants to be finished, I haven't gotten a projection from the county, they come in, hopefully, in another week or so, in terms of what they project our property expenses, I budgeted pretty much at last year, but I mean, if they say, so I'm just saying, there's room, and there's expectation that there may be a little more revenue coming in, and then we've also been talking about the cell towers and those kinds of things, but they haven't been formalized, so that's why I didn't see the thirty thousand as a problem. And when we submit it, it won't be, this has to be submitted by the thirty-first, and like I say, next week, we're hoping to get the information, should they send it out, about the third week in the December, so that we'll have the information to place, so if you look back at the property taxes on revenue on this sheet, you'll see that it was budgeted at the revised number, but we had anticipated it's like a hundred thousand or more, so that will probably make up for that. It just that I didn't have the exact number to put in, because I had not received it from the county. They sent out the call escape. And so that's why I wasn't concerned about that. But it's possible, I mean, this is basically.
My, my concern with that is that we have proven in history to never have underspent a budget in the past recent years, so if we look at history, we're actually more than likely going to overspend what was appropriated. If we're already behind, then we'll really be behind if that happens.
What happens?
If we overspend our appropriations, which is the tendency.
That's not our intent, that's not our intent is to overspend.
Okay. You mentioned that some things will need to be cut to make up, you know, thirty thousand dollars.
Or revenue will come in, which I expect more revenue.
Okay.
Like I say, if you look at the property taxes, you'll see that it's budgeted a hundred and five thousand dollars under what we've actually gotten for this year, okay, we've got it, not from one unit, eight, that's what we're averaging. And I could say, when the scheduled A comes in, in another week or so, I'm sure that property number will go up into one point seven. And I'm basing that on the fact that our local government went up, which seems to be up the trend in the government fund. which seems to be a up trend in the government funding and taxes and stuff.
But we cannot pass a budget that anticipates increasing a negative fund balance.
I tell you what, I could go and add thirty thousand to the property taxes.
If you think that that number is what it's going to be, then you should put it there.
I do, I think it'd be more than thirty thousand for last year.
Would you like to amend that, then?
I can't. I do, if you want to, I'd add it to the property taxes. I'll add the difference, so if there's some budgeting break even. And that was the whole purpose in the county, of trying to save the half a million dollars. But of course, with adding it back into, you know, the different programs, we sort of, you know, we took out some revenue from the engage. We took out the two hundred thousand that I had recommended that we use from these solid waste. So that reduced it there, like three hundred plus thousand dollars. And we add it for a couple hundred thousand. So that's the half a million, that's why I'm saying that it was not submitted to originally as an unbalanced budget. It's just some of the decisions that's been made, we have reduced it to that point.
So are these decisions feasible?
Well, sure, that's why it's been revised.
Okay, I mean, if the original goal, or actually, it was stated that we need to save a certain amount of money annually to pay down the negative balance in general fund, if that was the original goal, then we have departed from that goal, then?
Well, we have not departed from the goal, we have departed from the action. You know, let's just be clear, that the goal was associated with the levies passing would have taken care. I mean, if it's really realistic, if we receive no money, we spend no money. But we're spending money that we didn't receive based on the suggestion. I mean, you know, in the business world, if there was no money for the senior, then there would be no expenses to give to the senior. That's all I'm saying.
Right.
So, but this body, you know, wants to have something for the senior, I'm assuming that. So therefore, we add expenses, I add revenue. So I mean, you can't have both.
Yes, you're right. What were the other proposed cost-saving measures? You mentioned something will have to be cut to eventually balance this. You sound like you had had some kind of discussion about what the possibilities may be.
No, I think what I said is that we knew we had to reallocate expenses we had in the last year in order to cover some of the expenses for the senior. So what I said to you is that basically, it came out of that proposed reserve that I was budgeting, a couple hundred thousand dollars. So we're sort of using that because we did not get the levy money. So, you know, it's just replacing. That's where it is. And I think we just said, and I agree, that I'm gonna add thirty thousand to the property taxes. That'll be a break even, but I just explained how the five hundred thousand disappeared when we reduced the monies for the proposed transfer, not transfer, but the use of the solid waste. That is part of that original projection. And so also with the engage fees. So when those come out, quite naturally, it reduces the revenue, and then you add your expenses.
Irene, on our agenda for next Wednesday, we have the, actually, we had a second reading for the Reading Day Contingency Fund. I don't see it here anywhere. That would be twenty-one extra.
I mean, in terms of adding it to this, well...
It's just folded into the general fund?
Have you been passed?
No, not yet.
Well, that's why I got the center to add soft lines. I mean, when it's actually passed, then I'll add it. So that'll be twenty-one thousand then. But until I know for sure as much as possible.
Okay, just make sure.
Right, so, and then it's passed, I'll add it.
Well, that is on the agenda for Wednesday. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Speaking of contingency, is there any contingency line item, perhaps within general fund, for unforeseen circumstances? Is there any built-in cushion?
No, the cushion that we just spoke of, I just explained how it is going.
So there's absolutely no cushion?
No, at this time, we just used it for the senior program.
Irene, I want to thank you for reshuffling and coming up with enough money to keep the senior center operating, human services. Thank you. It's a part of the city, and I think we should be glad that you did this and come up with to keep it a part of the city for our people. Thank you.